Called order, the Grant County Board of Commissioners regular meeting in December 21st, 2017. Welcome everybody, please join us in the pledge of allegiance and the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge the flag and state of Mexico with the symbol of our shared friendship among the American citizens.
First item on the agenda is to approve the regular meeting agenda. Madam manager, are there any changes that need to come?
No, sir.
Can I ask you anything? No? Can I get a motion to approve it? Motion second to approve the agenda, any discussion, seeing none, all those in favor, say goodbye, say aye. Okay, no report from the regional medical center today, so we will stand for public input during this portion of our meeting. We welcome your suggestions and want to hear your concerns. This is not a question and answer period. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. Any individual who would like to discuss an item in more depth may request to be placed on a future agenda. Request forms are available in the county manager's office. At this time, we will have public input. Yes, sir, Mayor. You probably have to turn on the mic there.
Yes, sir, thank you.
How are you today?
Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak this morning. I'd just like to advise the commission that, or just let you know that I'm going to be submitting a request to be placed on the agenda to possibly discuss a partnership between the village of Santa Clara and Grant County on partnership of, ownership of Fort Bear. And I'd like to just give the county make you be aware of the fact of the reason in that request to be placed on the agenda.
Okay. I hadn't thought of that, that's interesting, that's interesting. So, yeah, we look forward to working with the planning department and commissioners.
Yeah, thank you. Last legislative session, Cabinet Secretary Burkle had mentioned the fact that he would consider transferring the property to a coalition like it was between us, the village, and the county to have a partnership type of a situation like that. So, I'd like to maybe open and start the discussion on something like that, so.
Well, I actually had a question for you, so I was kind of happy that you're here today.
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind.
No.
Baton Park, in our, in our work session, we talked about an ordinance prohibiting alcoholic beverages at Baton Park.
Okay.
However, that park is in your municipality, so our ordinance would not be enforced if we did that, so it makes no sense for us to pass an ordinance. So, we may want to talk to you about maybe passing an ordinance prohibiting alcoholic beverages in Baton Park.
That would be perfectly fine, I'd love to introduce that. We have ordinances that restrict alcohol beverages in other city parks, so we definitely look forward to working with you on that.
Okay. Probably, since that's Gage District, they'll probably let him be the lead on that.
Okay.
All right?
That would be great.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Mayor, thanks for coming to see us.
Thank you, well, thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor. For the public input. Yes, Chris. Aren't you on the agenda somewhere today?
I am, I'm just here for the duration. No, but good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, County staff. I just wanted to say happy holidays, first of all, to you all, and thank you for all of the hard work that you've done this past year and the hard work that's coming. I know that that's not going to end and appreciate that. You had hard decisions to make last year and many more to make this year. And along those lines, a couple of things on the agenda that I just wanted to speak to briefly. The Takasa Advisory Board, having been part of this now, I'm not a short timer, just going on four and a half years, for others that have been working on this for over ten. I'm really thankful and happy to say that the charter has been pretty much as close as it can get to approval and that this whole thing, driving by and going down there and seeing the building itself, it's kind of surreal, actually. It's a dream that's becoming a reality and just becoming more and more important, given everything that we're all hearing about, the massive problems that we have with people who are suffering from addictions in their families and the community. So, thank you for that. Also, just wanted to say along the lines, and I saw the letter on the Grant County beat from the county about the healthcare support letter, and thank you for that. I was at the board meeting, Board of Trustees' meeting last Friday and was very encouraged to hear some of the financial things that I heard and the things that I did happen to say there and public comment about people I know who have used the services. And again, our hospital just continues to be one of the best in terms of caregivers. I just don't think that we could ask for better experience. So, my hope is that as this process continues, as your letter says throughout the months, that, that everything that can possibly be done to have mutual cooperation between our Board of Trustees' and you all, to get down to what is absolutely real, to make those decisions, and just want to encourage as much transparency to the public as possible and perhaps regular updates, a community meeting, those sorts of things, so we can get in front of any issues as we had to deal with last summer in terms of the cancer center and really involve the community. So, want to thank you for that and support all of the work that all of you will do on this, and I think that's all for now.
For the public input. Yes, Sissy.
I'm Sissy McAndrew, I also want to wish you happy holidays and a wonderful winter solstice, which is today. I also want to just thank you for what you're doing. As you know, I'm really concerned about the hospital. I'm concerned that the third eyes that we have looking at the hospital, their background is really helping entities transition, and so I'm hoping that we transition as a community and do get the community input. I'm so pleased I can be here to talk to you face to face, I'm pleased I can talk to the hospital face to face, and I'm hoping in the future it isn't a situation of trying to write a letter to a corporate entity about a problem I'm having with my, with the local hospital. The other thing I just wanted to mention, you all know that I'm a Realtor, and I am starting to get people, I've had one in particular, and I'm starting to get more people. They come in, they love the community, they're not quite ready to move, but one thing they're mentioning is I understand that you may not have your hospital. So, I think whatever we're doing, we need to be sure that the public relations that we're really getting it out there, that we're working on this, we are going to have a hospital, and that it doesn't impact us negatively economically as far as people moving into the Grant County area. Other than that, I'll see you in 2018. Thank you so much.
Thank you. For the public input. One once, twice, moving on. Okay, minutes, approve or disapprove, we'll bill all four of these. November 7th, work session, November 8th, special meeting, November 9th, regular meeting, and November 14th, special meeting.
I approve it.
Second. Motion second to approve, four sets of minutes, any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say goodbye, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Financial reports, approve or disapprove the December 11th, 2017 expenditure report.
I approve the December 11th, 2017 expenditure report as presented to this work session by Rina.
Second.
Motion second to approve the December 11th, 2017 expenditure report, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say goodbye, say aye. Motion passes. New business, Hila Regional Medical Center, financial information, Ms. Nichols is here to give us some information today. She was so gung ho, she was here Tuesday to give it to us.
Okay, excuse me, thanks, and again, as everybody else has said, Merry Christmas to all of you guys, and we know that this is a thankless job you do, you don't, not many people call you to tell you, hey, I like what you do, you get the bad phone calls, so that being said. I'm here as a concerned citizen and as a cancer survivor, and I missed the Board of Trustees' meeting on Friday, but I understand there was some good financial news, and so that's really a good thing for all of us. When I recently reported to you on the CFO salary, I gave you a correct number, however, there was one thing that wasn't accurate. When Carolyn Banks provided me that figure of $233,809.
CEO or CFO?
CFO. They didn't, she didn't provide me what the pay through date, and because they gave it to me in October, late October, I assumed probably that it was through the end of the month of September, but that was not accurate. It was actually through October 28th. But the bottom line is, is she's working 79 hours a week at $93 an hour, and the Board of Trustees tells me that she is underpaid, and I think probably the citizens of Grant County, for a medium income is $38,000, would find that a really hard pill to swallow. I, I think she is very, very qualified moving forward, I'd love to see them give her a contract as a permanent employee, or cut her back to 40 hours a week, that, that would be an option also. In the past several months, I've attended a lot of the Board of Trustees' meetings, and for the most part, I've been treated courteously by all, all of the employees and most of the Board of Trustees. But the stares and the glares and the snicker as I walk through the hospital cafeteria isn't going to make me go away. Stare at me, glare at me, but I'm here to stay until I'm satisfied that I think that, that I've gotten the answers that, that I've tried to get. And I never, or I tell them go into town, and yesterday in Albertson's, I had four people walk up to me and thank me for, as they said, staying in their face, asking the questions because somebody needs to, to let them know that we are paying attention. I recently read that U&amp;M does not manage the cancer center, but they only provide the physicians. They're not even doing that. There's a physician here one day a week, and in the RFP, it was said that they would provide physicians eight hours a day, five days a week, 52 weeks a year excluding holidays, and that's not happening. I called on December the 8th and asked when the first appointment was that you would be able to get, and it was on February 16th, that's 70 days. And I don't know about you guys, but when I had cancer, that wasn't an option for me. So, if it's 70 days to see the doctor for the first time, you're about 90 days being able to get a first treatment. By the time he works up a plan, they order the drugs, they get them to Silver City, and they administer them, and to me, that's, that's just not acceptable. What I have learned also is when a person calls to ask to get an appointment, they are asked, are you in remission? If you are in remission, they're pushing you back probably to April or May, so that's about 150 days. And so, U&amp;M is not holding up to their end of the contract, and Hila Regional needs to hold them to the fire. Then, there seems to be some confusion on the radiation machine, and I know that they went before the prospectors wanting, wanting to get funds to, to pay for that, and I don't blame Kathy for that, that, her job is to run the hospital and to save them money. However, that being said, you would have thought the people on the scoring committee or the Board of Trustees would have asked that question, is, are we going to have to buy more equipment? What's it going to cost? How long's it going to take us to get it up? But it didn't seem to be important enough for us to find out that information. You know, and, and on the, going to the prospectors for money, if I were a part of an entity that had used good management skills and they gave it to somebody that had shot themselves in the foot, I'd be pretty upset. So, probably some people are going to ask of me why I'm reliving in the past, and I'm not. However, we can't forget the past. We can't pretend like this never happened, and the best, the best indicator of future behavior is to look at past behavior, whether it's acting responsibly or recklessly. And I just think that it's important for the people in this county to, to pay attention to what's going on, because if we don't speak up, then we don't have a right to complain. So, that's it.
You're always welcome here, Mayor.
Well, thank you. I'm not up there.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the quarterly senior Grant County representative report from Cristobal. Adieu.
Hi, once again, I'm here just representing Grant County as your representative on the Non-Metro Area Agency on Aging Advisory Council for Grant County. So, I wanted to tell you, and I'm also been serving on the Legislative and Advocacy Committee for this group, we had a phone call just this week, and of course, session is coming up. Just a few things, and I know that you have, you have supported in the past, of course, any of the legislation, the bills, the funding bills particularly, but I wanted to give you kind of a heads up of what the theme is and when Senior Day is and what we're asking for and how important it is. You as our, as our county partner, this is with HMS and who are really trying hard, and it is such a hard job to do the senior centers with the demographics that they are and do the things they want to do. So, you should know that the theme for this year's Senior Day, the Planning Committee and Advocacy efforts is New Mexico's Networks on Aging and Able Independence, and that's really the truth. The more that we can do with our senior centers across the state, everywhere, but the more that we can provide to them, the outreach and some of the things that they need in places they are familiar with, really help, help them maintain some independence and some, you know, some, what's the word, camaraderie. So, population, and the things that are pushing this theme are population growth and impact, and we all know that this, we're an aging population, and in this county, we are particularly an aging population within the state's 33 counties. The value of the Aging Network, which is really big statewide, it includes all of the providers, it includes the AAA, affectionately known, and the funding that comes from the Older Americans Act is really what funds, that's the federal dollars that actually come through the state, through the Aging and Long Term Services Network Department. And so, we're asking just that you, when things come up and you see them and you hear and maybe get a phone call from me saying, can you call and support, you know, this when the time comes in January and February, because what we don't want to see happen are these resources reallocated elsewhere out of Aging and Long Term Services, the state dollars that go to fund our partners like HMS, who do a really difficult job, and you guys know because you've done it in the past for a long time. So, there is that. I think that's really it, just giving you the report that this is, you know, HMS has really come a long way. They had a lot of backup and back work to do in terms of getting people who hadn't been assessed in a long time back on the roll, so the numbers meet what is being billed as their invoices, and there are many things that they want to do and enhance those services. So, anything that we can do, me as the representative, you as the county representatives, and anything that we can do to support them, either legislatively, publicly, and then look at that partnership role closely as we continue to age here, that'll just become even more important. And if you have any questions at all, I would be glad to answer them.
Looks like you did a good job. Thank you. Approve or disapprove the Grant County Water Commission's submitted to the USDA application for the Grant County Regional Water Project remaining phases of the project.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. I, I invited Ms. Priscilla Lucero to come in and give us a little breakdown of, of what's been going on in the past, what, three years now, and just to let us know exactly where we're at when it comes to the Grant County Water Commission and the waters coming in from the airport to Hurley.
Good morning and Merry Christmas to you all, and another year is almost behind us, and so, many accomplishments, and the Grant County Regional Water Project is one of, really one of those projects that really has come a long, long way. So, just an update on that, currently, the actual, all of the funding for the Phase 1A, which is about $7.8 million, has already been secured. We're in the final stages of actually ratifying the agreement between the Town of Hurley and the Interstate Stream Commission with an agreement. The one little dilemma we're having among those two agencies is that both those agencies are saying that they have to spend their money last. So, in that conversation, we are now going to meet with both USDA and ISC so that we can figure out a means and way, in which way we can actually determine how maybe either we can spend the money proportionately from each one of the funding sources, or how we can actually have somebody either say, we'll be the last one. And so, those are some kinds, some of the requirements and the funding sources themselves. And so, therefore, we were waiting for the final approval from the New Mexico Environment Department, and so we would expect to go out to bid here within the next 30 days is our hope, and so that the final completion of the Phase 1A would be in December, which would be coinciding with the deadline of the contract with Freeport-Mattar and with the Town of Hurley. So, with that being said, one of the conversations, as you know, last year, we presented this project to the New Mexico Infrastructure Finance Conference, and at that point, USDA did mention to us about considering doing this as a entire entity through the Grant County Water Commission and submitting an application. The reason we didn't go that route for the Phase 1A was because we already had funding secured, there were applications already in process, and the reality is, is that we had a very short timeframe in order to meet the contract requirement, which was the December 31st of 2018. So, at this last infrastructure conference and discussions between myself, Alex, and USDA, one of the opportunities that came about was, why don't we just come to USDA and ask for the remaining phases of that funding to fund the entire water project? And so, as a result of that, I had them come present to the Grant County Water Commission, and some of the, the pros of doing that is, number one, it's more cost effective, number two, you know, you're, you're going to, you're going to be able to reduce some of the costs from the engineering standpoint, and then also, it makes more sense from a USDA standpoint because according to the new Community Services Director that is housed in Albuquerque, says is that she would be willing to take the total pot of allocation that is given to New Mexico under the Water and Wastewater Colonias Grant Program and fund this entire project, depending on what that allocation is. She would consider doing that because she sees the value of this project, and we might as well just fund it once and, and get it done. So, some of the cons are, concerns around, how do we do the management of the system if the Water Commission owns the system? How do we determine the rates? Those are all things that were of concern. So, one of the suggestions from the USDA Community Services Director is, is that we're not going to really know what those rates are going to be or how it's going to be structured if we don't even make the attempt to know what the possibility is of securing the funding through USDA. So, her suggestion was, is to consider applying to USDA for the remaining phases. That would allow them to take over the process of doing the research of, how are you going to do the rates? How do we going to do, how are we going to develop a powers agreement to do the operations? Do the local governments really want to do that? Have they taken it back to their respective councils and have received approval on that? And so, one of the things she said is that that would be the trigger, right? So, once all that's done as part of the application process, then what, what that allows is that allows USDA to prepare for the next funding cycle, and in their eyes, if we can have something to them by June, would allow an opportunity to come back to the Water Commission and say, here's your option. And let's just, let's just take an example. Let's say as part of their, their, their funding, they say, well, out of the $12 million that's still needed to fund the remaining phases of this, is they say, well, we're going to fund you 10 million and we're going, you're all going to have to take a loan at 2 million. So, that would allow the Water Commission to make a decision and say, no, that's not going to work for us, and the reason it's not going to work for us, because now we're going to have to increase rates by this much, which is now going to impact our residents, and we're not feeling comfortable for that reason, that it's, they're already paying too much, as an example. Or it could mean that they could come back and say, hey, we're going to give you 11 million, and it's only 1 million. We don't know what those options are, we're not going to know based on, we don't know what the total allocation is federalized, they have to take a lot of numbers into account, they have to take the financial information from each one of the local governments, plus they have to look at the poverty situations in the communities, et cetera. So, just be aware that whenever you do take a loan with USDA or take a grant and loan combination, it is a requirement that you take on a loan. So, you can't just say, I'm going to take the 11 million dollars of that money, and then I'm going to figure out a way to get the 1 million dollars from another funding source to cover the loan component. That's not the way USDA works. So, so they have to figure out what's going to be something that's feasible, because the reality is, is they want to make sure that the loan that, that is going to be incurred can be paid off, right? That's, that has to be.
And you borrowed the 1 million, you still have the capability of seeking funding from other sources to pay off that 1 million?
You do not.
You do not.
You do not.
You keep the loan forever.
Right.
Well, until paid.
So, here's kind of my, my thought process, and there's been discussions about other means and, and ways to actually fund this project. And so, let's just take another example. Let's say that another funding opportunity comes about, and let's say that that funding opportunity says, well, you know what, we're only going to agree to give you 10 million dollars for the project, and we know that, that you really need 12. Then, the one opportunity that we do have if we move forward through this process is that, that USDA likes being the, the funding, that's the last piece of it, right? So, so as an example, then they say, okay, let's modify the numbers now, because now our scenario has changed. Initially, we needed 12, but now we only need 2, and then you can change the scenario because you already have had that submitted, that application. So, then I would say, right, so, so I'm, I'm just thinking that, I'm thinking ahead from a, from a cautious measure, is that if we have a person that's willing to allocate her entire funds to this project, because those funds that she's talking about are entirely for Southern New Mexico, and she's willing to do that, it's an opportunity that I've never heard of in my career, number one. If there's a concern about what happens to all those other projects in Southern New Mexico that have had priority in the waiting list that maybe have submitted applications, well, one of the things that this Community Services Director has been doing, and it's been done in the past, is that they're taking monies from other states that have been reverted as, as part of not being utilized and putting those monies to the smaller projects that are more fundable because they're smaller in scope. So, I just want to toss that out there because I think it's important for you to know that we don't ever want to take somebody's money that has already been in line, but it's an opportunity for us to take monies from other states that have not been utilized in money, and that happens quite often. So, what I had Bernadette do this morning is just kind of put a packet on your, on your, on your stations there. This is the actual presentation that I made in Washington DC with regards, because I wanted to really show of the amount of investment, and I'm just going to hit some of the highlights, the amount needed to do the remaining phases, and let me just explain the phases. The Phase 1B for the Hurley phase is that, that is to actually provide a secondary well along with making sure that we have some energy efficiency tied into that, which is the solar. So, that's that piece. And then you'll see the other remaining phases, which is the connection to Bayard and then to Santa Clara, and then where I have Arenas Valley, that is actually the dollar amount for the racetrack area and the Highway 180, and I just put it under there. You'll also notice that as a result from when we started working with this project, there has been $19 million in investment from, from applications and projects that have been awarded to do various phases in the mutual domestics and some of the local governments, and you'll see there how much has been invested thus far from some of these other entities, which are Colonias designated areas as well. So, that's, that's just kind of a quick overview, but I wanted you to have this in hand so that if you had any questions with regards to where we are and where we've come and where we're headed, we've made great strides, I think, for a project this size in a very short time, in my opinion. So, with that, if I can answer any questions in regards to processes around USDA or questions around the project, I'd be happy to do so at this time.
Thank you. I really appreciate the very complex project you've taken on and your time taken to explain that to us. that to us.
Did I tell you that Gabe almost forced me into retirement yesterday?
No. Gabe will do that.
Well, he needed your help today, so thanks for coming.
Yeah. So my question to them, and more, um, is I, I realize that we're a ways away from seeing what JPA might be needed for the commission to take this on. And I'm curious if one of the things being contemplated is giving the commission the power to bill rather than letting that reside with the municipality.
That is correct. That is correct. It is my understanding that from USDA's recommendation, that, that the Grant County Water Commission would be the owner, and then how that is figured and how you bill and how you're going to actually then, then do the rate analysis, how it's gonna be maintained and operated, all of that would fall within the Water Commission, has kinda been what some of the discussions have occurred thus far.
So those who are receiving services from the commission would get a bill from water from them, but would continue to get billed for other services by their municipalities?
Correct. So my understanding is, is that every local government would retain their own ownership to their own system, because remember that the water that's coming into these remaining phases is like a secondary water supply. So my understanding from the conversations we've had thus far, so if someone else taps into that water, then the, then the water is gonna be charged based on a bulk rate.
So the commission will be billing the municipal utilities, not individual consumers? And the municipal utilities would pass that along through the billing of their?
That would be my understanding, yes.
That's very helpful.
And I, and I, that was the one option that we talked about, and I don't really know if there are other options, but that's the one that we had the conversation about most recently.
Okay. Thank you very much. You know, one of the things I would like to see added to this, and mostly infrastructure's area there, but Hanover is not a part of this project.
Well, it is.
It is?
Yes.
It's not listed?
Well, it's listed in the.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I missed it.
Yeah. Yeah, it is. And so Christie was saying yesterday that Hanover has not tapped into their emergency water supply from Bayard in the last, what was it, Gabe? Few months?
Yes, at least quarter.
Right. And they had at least been tapping in significantly to that emergency water source, and they had not. So I think that's, that's a positive, but this is also another means of providing that emergency water supply.
Yeah.
So that it doesn't just impact Bayard itself.
Right. Okay. Sorry, I missed that. Any other questions? No?
Yeah, just keep in mind that when that, if that application goes through and the offer comes to the Water Commission, they have the ability to say, this is not gonna work for us, this is gonna work for us, um, or in any phase of this where it just doesn't seem like it's viable, you have the ability to remove yourself from there. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, please. So appreciate you.
At this time, I'd take a motion to approve or disapprove the Grand County Water Commission. Uh, I guess we're giving them our approval for our ability to submit a USDA application for the Grand County Regional Water Project?
Well, actually, what we're asking, just pretty much asking for a blessing to move forward with the application, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the Grand County Water Commission to submit a USDA application for the Grand County Regional Water Project, remaining phases of the project.
Motion, second, to approve the USDA submitted for an actual application. We'll get a chance to review that as well.
I'm sure we will.
Yeah. Great. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say five, say no. All right. Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Grand County Substance Abuse and Addiction Treatment Center Advisory Board Charter as amended?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Abby added some language, uh, in regards to the amendments to the charter, and the language states the Grant County Commission shall have sole authority to revise or amend this charter. Such amendment shall be effective upon approval of a majority of the members of the Grant County Commission, standard language and our other amendments such as this.
Okay, and what do we do with the membership?
Oh, yes, we revise that to reduce the community members from five to four, adding one member of the Grant County Commission.
Okay. Okay, then a motion to approve or disapprove?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion, we approve the Grand County Substance Abuse and Addiction Treatment Center Advisory Board Charter with the changes.
A second. The motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say five, say no. All right. Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Agreement Number A 1744, Professional Services Contract Between SkyWest Media and Grant County Design and Developer Website?
Mr. Chairman, there was also some proposed amendments to, to this agreement under item number six. It said creative control prior. I revise that to say creative judgment. SkyWest is free to use their best creative judgment in producing contact, content under this contract, removing all of the reference to control.
That works for you.
That works for me. Thank you, Chairman.
You're welcome.
Can I get a motion? Chairman, I'd like to move, we approve the professional services agreement with SkyWest Media as presented by our manager. Motion is second to approve Agreement A 1744.
Sorry, I left that out.
That's all right. I always have to say again. Um, A 1744, is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say five, say no. All right. Motion passes. Resolution. Approve or disapprove Resolution Number R 1756? This is the policy for renting and use of the Baton Memorial Park Pavilion and concession facilities.
Mr. Chairman, we amended this as well based on the discussion around the sale service and consumption of alcohol under item number 10. We revised that to say any sale, service, and/or consumption of alcohol anywhere in the park, pavilion, and concession facility is prohibited, clearing up the language that we were referencing the entire park in the previous resolution. And we've also amended the language in the agreement to match, to match this. It said the same thing, referenced the entire park rather than just the pavilion concession facility that this applies to.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion, we approve the Resolution Number R 1756, policy for renting and use of the Baton Memorial Park Pavilion and concession facility?
I'll second that. The motion is second to approve R 1756. Is there any discussion on that motion?
Now, under discussion, should we add some order that we were renting this building and muscled by the Santa Clara ordinances? Or should we just put that in the actual application?
If Santa Clara passes an ordinance prohibiting alcohol at Baton Park, they'll, they will, when they pass that ordinance, they'll, they'll, they'll talk about what's prohibited, and then they'll, what's that? And then they'll, they'll have a punishment in that ordinance. Um, I don't think this needs to address that at all.
I need to be put in there, okay. Just put this.
Am I right?
I agree.
Okay. I agree. Mine must be right. So we will, and I think as part of this discussion, I think we do need to send a letter to Santa Clara, Don Boulver, Mayor Bouche, uh, ask him for that. If somebody inquires about renting the facility, it would be courteous of us to let them know. We should put the ordinance with that. Hang up. I agree. Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say five, say no. All right. Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Resolution R 1757, a resolution to accept the donation of a used fire truck from Donnyana County? Uh, we went over this on Tuesday. See if I have a, wanna make a motion? Chairman, I'd like to move, we approve the resolution to accept donation of a used fire truck from Donnyana County. That's Resolution R 1757. Can I get a second? There's a motion and a second to approve R 1757. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say five, say no. All right. Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Resolution R 1758? This is a statement of vacation of the Turnerville subdivision plant. We originally did vacate this, and this is, uh, a letter that the Parks Office needs to finish up.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion, we approved Resolution Number R 1758.
Motion is second to approve R 1758. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say five, say no. All right. Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Resolution Number R 1759, authorizing and approving submission of a completed application for financial assistance and project approval to the New Mexico Finance Authority?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion, we approve Resolution Number R 1759.
Motion, pro per second to approve R 1759. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say five, say no. All right. He's getting slow here, guys.
I'm only as fast as this thing while we're.
I noticed it was a little slow when it goes. Paying this close attention, but we didn't mention that this is for acquisition, construction, and improvement of the Whiskey Creek Volunteer Fire Department. But that's what it's for. Approve or disapprove Resolution R 1760, resolution amending the purchase, purchasing card program?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion, we approve Resolution Number R 1760.
Motion, pro per second to approve R 1760. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say five, say no. All right. Motion passes. Bids and requests for proposals. The first one is approve or disapprove RFP Number 1801, Strategic Communications and Engagement Consulting Services. Chairman, we'll run this on Tuesday.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we approve RFP 1801 for strategic communication services.
Second. Motion is second to approve RFP 1801. Any discussion on motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say five, say no. All right. Motion passes. Approve or disapprove IFB Bid Number B 1705, hauling and delivery of pit run and other road material for the Grant County Road Department? That bid, the management has asked us to reject.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion, we disapprove the IFB Bid Number B 1705.
A second on that motion. There's pro per second on motion, pro per second to disapprove B 1705. Is there any discussion on motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say five, say no. All right. B 1705 is disapproved. Approve or disapprove Bid Number B 1706, road materials for the Grant County Road Department? Management has also asked us to disapprove this bid.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion, we disapprove IFB Bid Number B 1706.
A second. The motion is second to disapprove B 1706. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say five, say no. All right. All right. B 1706 is disapproved. Okay, at this time, I'd ask for a motion to recess the Grand County Board of Commissioners.
A second.
There's a motion, a second to recess the Grand County Board of Commissioners. All in favor, say five, say no. All right. Motion passes. Call to order, the Grand County Healthcare Claims Board. Uh, approve or disapprove the November 17th health plan claims? The agency fund in the amount of fourteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars. Twenty-five seconds. The November 2017 healthcare claims from the Grand County Agent Fund have been presented by the mayor.
A second.
There's a motion and a second to approve. It hasn't come up, so I can't give you the breakdown yet. Oh, fourteen, oh, you want the two different ones separated? Yeah, I got it, yeah. Okay. So there's a motion, a second to approve the health plan claims. There's seven claims for ten thousand and sixty-six dollars and sixty cents to the regional medical center, and forty-eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars and seventy-five cents for the ambulance, for a total of fourteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-five, thirty-five cents. The motion is second to approve. Any other discussions? Seeing none, all in favor, say five, say no. All right. Motion passes. Approve or disapprove the remaining amount for October 2017?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion, we approve the remaining amount of October 2017 health claims agent fund in the amount of six hundred and sixty-five and eighty-four cents.
There's a motion, a second to approve the remaining amount for October of six hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighty-four cents. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say five, say no. All right. Motion passes. At this time, I'd take a motion to adjourn the Healthcare Claims Board. A motion? All in favor, say five, say no. All right. Call back over to the Grand County Board of Commissioners, and at this time, we'll stand for elected officials to report. Just, just two of you today, you'll be short.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me go over my November stat report for the Sheriff's Office, uh, for stats for November and patrol. Uh, we entered five hundred and twenty-one calls for service. Well, we took a hundred and eighteen reports. We investigated twenty-eight motor vehicle collisions, and we served fifty-three warrants. Um, we did have eleven burglaries for the month of November. Stats for November in civil process, we served three hundred and eighty-nine papers to include DVOs, subpoenas, and RITs. We did have nine round trips, transports to prisons and other facilities, for a total of five thousand one hundred and sixty-seven miles. Um, the staff has been extremely busy. Um, as you know, we're, we're running a little short there, and they've been keeping up with the workload, so I wanna thank them for doing that. You know, they've been diligently working and continuing to work. Currently, I have the three new hires going through the FTO training, which is good. They've been picking up everything pretty well, and, and I foresee them succeeding when they go through the academy. They're scheduled to go to the academy in February, so we have them for another month to train them, and hopefully, as soon as they complete their academy in, in June, they'll be able to go out on the street, because they'll have already gone through the FTO program, so I'm hoping that they get through that. Uh, we had no issues on during the Thanksgiving holiday. Uh, everything went pretty smooth without any issues. We're, we are now preparing for the upcoming Christmas and New Year's holiday, which usually keeps us pretty busy. Um, I wanna do, I do wanna let the public know to be observant of their surroundings when they are shopping and unloading items at home and, and, you know, be observant of your surroundings. If people watch you loading expensive stuff or presents and stuff, just to report it to us, and we'll go out and patrol and just see if we can make contact with these people, because we have been getting hit, and, um, obviously, they, they see Christmas presents, and, you know, it's unfortunate that they go do that. So I just ask the community to be observant and report anything that's suspicious in their area. I did wanna just bring up a little bit of, and I apologize for not speaking up at, when you discussed the resolution in regards to renting the Baton Park. Um, I know there's, uh, Santa Clara's possibly gonna be doing the ordinance, but I just wanna let you know that if they do, even though they do pass an ordinance, if, if they're not available and we get called out there, we're not gonna be able to enforce that ordinance. We cannot enforce the city ordinance, so just wanna put that out there. Uh, usually, a lot of times when Baton Park is rented and it's late at night, sometimes they don't have coverage, and we get called to that location, so just wanna make you guys aware of that, so you might consider something else, um, because we will not be able to enforce it. Other than that, Chairman, I have nothing else to report, unless you have any questions?
An ordinance that we passed wouldn't be enforceable inside their city limits either, so it's kind of a catch point here.
So how do we do that passage? I mean, or is it somehow?
I don't know. We'll have to make that something.
I thought it was cross-deputizing a law enforcement official so that they could enforce each other's.
It's because of liability. There was some real big liability on some of the issues on that.
Is there a way to do that, or you're cross-commissioning them somehow to be able to enforce?
Right. Um, as far as, we have jurisdiction on, on anything in the county. Now, me cross-commissioning them is not gonna help if they don't have anybody available, which is in their municipality already, so it's not gonna make a difference.
You wouldn't just be giving them the right to enforce our ordinance?
It's just they'd be giving you the right to enforce their ordinance. Right. And I'm not sure how that works. I mean, we've never been, because, like you say, the county has jurisdiction in the whole county, other than enforcing city ordinances.
Is there a state statute that you can?
I'm gonna research that. There's possibly drinking in public statute, but, you know, that's, there's other measures we're gonna have to look at. But I just wanna make that clear to you guys, that we cannot enforce the city ordinance.
Okay. I appreciate that, sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so if we don't have any other elected officials, we'll move into commissioners' reports.
Oh, Cessar's office.
Cessar? No. So, normally, I let the other commissioners go first on their reports, but I'm going to go first, so you can comment on mine if you choose to. Hopefully, this will go a long way, just spilling some of the rumors in town. Last, last spring, we announced that we were going to put out an RFP for some help from somebody on the hospital. We have entered into, into that proposal with Juniper Services. We've had an organizational meeting, one educational meeting, and in December, we finally had a somewhat substantial, with, with some decisions being made, with the, we appointed a task force, and the single goal of the task force is to do what's best for the patients served by the Hila Regional Medical Center. The members are as follows. Taffy Arias, she is the CEO of the hospital. Alicia Edwards, my partner here on the commission. Jeanne Miller, she's a member of the hospital Board of Trustees. Dr. John Stanley. Dr. Michelle Diaz. Charlene Webb, our county manager. Mike Maronis, member of the Board of Trustees and past mayor, and myself. In December, the task force began exploring whether Hila Regional should remain independent, or whether partnering with another healthcare system is the best way in which to secure Grant County's healthcare future. The decision to explore those options did not come easy. The decision comes in light of the sweeping changes taking place in today's healthcare industry, along with the dismal financial performance of GRMC in the past few years. It was pointed out to me that in two thousand fifteen, they lost about five million dollars; two thousand sixteen, they lost around four million dollars. In the last three months, they have had some improvement. In August, they lost a million. September, they lost a half a million. No, it was September they lost a million. October, they lost a half a million, and in November, they only lost eighty thousand dollars. So, their trend line is good, however, it is still in the left more hem quadrant of the, of the system, right? Once you know, though, that, you know, Hila Regional is not alone in this situation. Many other rural hospitals across the country are exploring some of these very same options. The reason we're beginning this important work is because families in our community count. They count on us to make informed, thoughtful decisions, so we can continue delivering high-quality, cost-effective healthcare and a superior patient experience. Please make, make no mistake, this commission's commitment to assure quality healthcare in a financially secure hospital is unwavering. As we begin this process, we will explore whether remaining independent or entering into a partnership is the best way to complete three goals. One is provide resources needed to enhance and expand our facilities and services, so we can increase our access for our patients. Recruit and retrain physicians, nurses, and other caregivers to Silver City, so our patients can receive the care they need here at home. Provide the financial security that Hila needs to continue providing our patients with quality, affordable, accessible healthcare for generations to come. We are all well aware, the community is very sensitive to changes regarding the future of their healthcare. With the recent changes in the Cancer Center and the new leadership at GRMC, we want you to know we are committed to keeping the community informed as we progress. We are at the very beginning of this process, and it will take several months to determine if a partnership is right for our hospital. During that time, we will be transparent and share information when it's appropriate. Today, it's imperative for all of you to understand that no decisions have been made to go one way or the other, only to explore options. Remember, this is going to take months. Months. Be assured that this process will be very deliberate, that's why it's going to take so long. At the conclusion of the exploration, education work, probably sometime this summer, maybe early spring, probably summer, the task force will make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. At that time, it will be our job to make a decision on the future of healthcare for GRMC and our community. Thank you for allowing me that time there, so I will turn it over to other commissioners to talk. There you go. Well, I haven't been here on the hospital, so for continuity's sake, if either of you do, it makes sense to cover that topic now.
Actually, I, I just want to say thank you for bringing it up and, and clarifying, because we, we do get questioned quite a bit out in public, and, and it's not that we want to hurt anybody, we're just trying to do what's right, and I thank you very much for bringing that up.
Mr. Dave, I see that the commission has a, has a second layer of maybe protection, I want to word this right, as a second, as a backup protection to the Board of Trustees. The county owns the hospital. We don't, I've got to make it clear, that we, the commission does not get into the day, day, day operations of the hospital, but we do have some responsibility to the community to make sure that we save our hospital. I, I did want to reiterate what Mr. Keston said, and I, I was hoping that the hospital administration would be here today. It was a surprise to me that they weren't. I want to commend them for the positive trend with the finances. That's significant, because with the Cancer Center only operating with one oncologist per week, I'm surprised that the finances can be doing that good so soon. So, I'm optimistic with, with that information. Mr. Keston pointed out, he talked about Juniper Services. It's Juniper Advisory Services, and that word advisory is key. I think it's, it was my understanding that the close to half of the advisories they've done have not led to the sale of a hospital. And so, that's, that's key, because that's, that's the buzz that's sometimes going around in the community, is something about selling a hospital. I think people are living back in two thousand and five when that happened. Mr. Keston talked about a partnership, he didn't talk about selling the hospital, and it's my understanding that that has not come up. Actually, Dr. Stanley said that, he's on the advisory committee, and he said that that has not come up. I want to thank Hila Regional, Taffy Arias, as, again, I was hoping she was here, but she met with the Hila Regional Foundation recently, and restored the relationship between Hila Regional and the Foundation. I'm a member, I was a member of the Foundation before I was a member of the commission, and I didn't have any part in this, because I was a new member, but the Foundation, over the years, has raised two point four million dollars for the hospital. And I was sorry to see several years ago, and actually, a couple of years ago, when the hospital cut ties with the Foundation, demoralized the Foundation, basically kicked the Foundation out, and tried to go after their, what remaining money they had. And I was glad to see that CEO Arias and the current Board of Trustees saw that mistake and have restored ties with the Foundation. And I can tell you the Foundation members are happy, they're going to be able to start raising money again, and, and that's, I think that's big. I think with them not being here, that's all I have to say.
Well, just in closing then, on the hospital, I just want you guys to know how proud I am of, of your resolve in, in resolving this situation, and maintaining the goal of doing what's best for the patients at GRMC. And I want the community to know that, that I know that we're going to take some criticism for making some bold decisions to analyze GRMC's ability to remain as, as an independent county hospital, the last county hospital in the state, by the way. But I think all of us would rather take that criticism and do the hard work to get this finished, than we would like to look back in a couple of years going, we could have done something, and we chose not to, when, when the hospital is being sold on the, on a fire sale to the lowest bidder, rather than picking apart, that best suits our community, if that's the direction to go. So, I'm very proud of you guys for standing with us.
Now, you can leave, somebody's.
All right. And you, for taking this on, it's a lot of time and effort that you're putting in with Commissioner Edwards on that committee. And I'm not, I'm not as pessimistic as you are about the inevitability of a wave of criticism. I'm sure there will be folks who disagree with us, but I think our commitment to doing this transparently, and doing this in a way that involves the community, as some of the speakers this morning indicated, is going to mean a better level of understanding of our eventual decision. So, I'm impressed that we're wanting to do it that way, instead of completely in secret and then just springing it on everybody, and I think that will redound to our benefit in terms of community understanding of our ultimate decision. So, thanks for that commitment. Okay, and just so everybody knows, I don't expect any more information until probably February at this time, so. And there will be a letter in the papers tomorrow night, I think?
Different than the one that already went out in the beat?
That one wasn't supposed to go out yet.
Oh, good. Oops.
No, same letter.
Okay.
So, now we do regular commissioners' reports.
All right, well, I have a, a couple of items. I attended a workshop sponsored by the Attorney General's Office on the opioid legislation question on behalf of the county, so I wanted to report back to you. I understand we will be discussing that pending opioid litigation in executive session today, but there is information that we can share with the public. I got some of that out of the Attorney General's workshop. It was attended by, I believe, five counties and two municipalities that were interested in knowing what he was doing. The Attorney General himself, Mr. Valera, could not make it, so he had associates there to explain this. And there were some things that I hadn't known. Apparently, there was a settlement already involving opioids on a state level that I hadn't been aware of. The Attorney General has already filed lawsuit in state court, and they've got five claims. In that state court lawsuit, a couple of those five claims are not available in federal court. They're specific to New Mexico law, and that was one thing that the Attorney General, obviously, wanted to impress upon the rest of us. They, the AG's office would very much like all the counties in the state to back what they're doing, and they insisted several times that they will reach for a settlement that gets money directly to counties. He claimed he'd learned, through his associate, he had learned lessons of the past, including lessons from that previous opioid lawsuit, and not have any settlement money go to the legislature for distribution, because he's heard loud and clear that the counties felt they did not get a fair share of the tobacco settlement or of the previous opioid litigation settlement when that happened. So, he would like us to trust that that will happen in any eventual settlement or actual judgment in their lawsuit. So, he's looking for counties to support him, and I believe that's basically just going to be statements of support, not that you have to do anything. He wanted us to know that there are some risks involved in one of the options available to us, which is pursuing our own county litigation in federal court. And there are already over a hundred counties nationwide that have announced lawsuits in federal court. They don't have access to all the laws that the state of New Mexico has, of course, and one of the risks to counties for pursuing it is the possibility that if you lose in federal court, you could be taken out of any settlement of any other lawsuit, including in state court. So, the AG's office wanted us to understand that that was a potential risk. On the other hand, you may be in a better position if you do that with any eventual settlement in federal court, rather than being on the sidelines and not having participate. So, those are some considerations that, that I guess I want our county residents to know that, that we are considering in this issue. The costs to counties and to state governments from dependence on opioids and crimes related to that dependence are in the hundreds of millions, probably billions nationwide. Mr. Valera's had a figure of eight hundred and seventy million in New Mexico. I don't know, obviously, what went into that figure, he just put it up there on the screen. I'm sure we will be asked to try to document our expenses at some point, which will be a formidable task, I'm sure. But these, this depends, the point of the lawsuits is, the basis of the lawsuits, is that the manufacturers and marketers of these drugs falsely claimed that they were not addictive, or they were not as addictive as in fact they were, that they did so as a marketing tool, not based on scientific evidence, and that based on those facts, they should be held liable for many of the costs that we local governments have incurred. So, that's the, that's the broad outlines of the case. I don't know if anybody has questions, I might have forgotten something from the workshop. Okay. The only other thing I wanted to touch on then is the CAP entity. Wanted to thank our, our Commissioner Ramos, representative on that entity, for his vote in support of changing the joint powers agreement to potentially allow the ISC and the CAP entity to spend money on other projects, non-diversion projects, more than the nine point one million that's already been allocated. I realize that the new JPA is just being drafted, but I appreciated the, the vote in support of having the executive director draft that. And I actually don't know how Mayor Bausch voted, but I urge you, if you didn't, I urge you to support a revised JPA as well. I think that's all for now, and a happy solstice to everyone.
Thank you. Christmas, is there anything else?
Merry Christmas, everyone. Happy New Year.
All right. Well, same thing, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, everything's been, we've been really busy this last month. We've, I've attended meetings with, forest planning meetings, and we've also attended some wilderness discussion meetings with the Forest Service. During our SWACA meetings, we've discussed local economics. We've also had Dr. Ashcroft from NMSU give us a presentation on how the, on our local economics and how it's affected by the Forest Service, and see what we can do to work with the Forest Service to help our economy. We've also, we have also, through SWACA, asked for coordination with the forest for, for the forest planning and also for the wilderness designations. We've, through SWACA, we've also wrote a letter of support from the six counties to increase the speed limit from fifty-five on CP seventy-one on the New Mexico State Transportation Commission, and that letter went out last week. I've also been very busy with the Grant County Water Commission, which Priscilla gave a really good explanation of what we're doing through the commission. I'm glad you brought up the CAP entity. We're really, I, I think that most of the members there that belong to either municipalities or representing portion of municipalities, and, but there's only one in reserve, and also counties, really think that we should start looking at utilizing those monies through, for other different projects other than that diversion. Not saying that we're against the diversion, just we want to explore and see what else we can do with those monies. Also, attended a Baird City Council meeting, and where Bohannon Houston gave a great presentation... and Lord Bohannon Houston gave a great presentation on the Santa Clara project, the water project. Um, I really think that, uh, that presentation opened a lot of eyes, and, and they did a really good job during, during that presentation on, uh, on what Santa Clara is proposing, and inviting the city of Baird to, to join us and, and try and get a water project with the affluent, so thank you very much, Mayor Bausch, for your support and, and working together on this. We, I attended a planning meeting with the Forest Service Planning Meeting. What was it, last, last week, and it was a, a good meeting, it was good to see, uh, uh, the other commissioners there. We had Commissioner Brown, Commissioner Edwards were there, and it was, I've actually learned quite a bit. The presentations, I felt, were really good, and, uh, you know, the Forest Service has a tough job, they really do. And, uh, I forgot to also mention that through, through, uh, through the SWACA, we, we have asked the Forest Service to go ahead and have an open house meeting to present the wilderness designations at this, or wilderness proposed designations at this point. And I'd like to welcome them to come here and do it here, and maybe just set up the, the maps and, and do a little bit of explanation on how they go through their process. So we're, we're in the process of doing that.
They don't have any proposables yet, they have possible proposals, right?
Well, possible proposals, I guess that's fair. We, I've got the maps anyway. I've got the maps, and, uh, they, they sent, emailed us the maps, uh, a couple of weeks ago, and, uh, if anybody wants to see them, uh, the planning department does have the copies, and they will be available to see. Uh, if somebody wants to purchase them, I guess they'd have to go through the proper procedure. So, but they, they are allowed to, to go ahead and look at these maps at any time. And that's all I've got, been pretty busy, Camper.
Okay, so, um, we're going to go into an executive session, uh, session to listen to more opioid litigation. So at this time, I would, uh, first, I'd like to introduce my wife and my beautiful daughter Zoe that came to watch me today, I don't know, I guess you guys are bored.
Commissioner, can I say something that I know you're real proud of, but I know you didn't mention it out here?
I don't know, I don't ever brag about my kids.
Well, I, I, I think she needs to stand up, and we need to congratulate her for being accepted to UNM in the pharmacy program, so congratulations, that is awesome.
So, yeah, she's pretty.
I've never seen him nervous as he was today, you guys made him nervous.
Yeah, you did. Yeah. There's no doubt about it. So at this time, I would, uh, take a motion to move into executive session.
Take a motion to move into executive session, discussing pending opioid litigation.
Say it.
County Connecticut roll call vote.
Commissioner Brown.
I understand that we're moving into executive session.
Yes, Commissioner, Commissioner Oramo.
Yes, ma'am.
Chairman Caston.
Yes. So at this time, we're in executive session, we will come back to adjourn, there will be no further business when we come back.